Call to order the June 20th, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Clackamas County. County Commissioner Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Chair West. So Chair Smith is online, but she's asked Vice Chair West to chair the meeting. Commissioner Savis is on his way from a transportation meeting. He will be here. So everyone is here. But before roll call, our staff support today, Clerk to the Board, Tony Marinick, working frantically here to help, County Council Jane Vedo, with that roll call. So we'll start online. Chair Smith.
Here.
In the room, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Vice Chair West.
Here. I'll now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, founded by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. Due to multiple public hearings, this meeting may go a little long today. I may call for short breaks as needed between public hearings. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, Robert's rules of order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Let's see. First up is public communication. We are moving this general comment period to the beginning of the meeting due to the large number of public hearings on the agenda. I would like to ask you to limit your testimony to non-budget topics or to the water environment services systems development charge adjustments and the rate changes that will be a topic of the board discussion later in the agenda. If you have registered to speak on one of the budget hearings, you will be called on at the appropriate time. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statute and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication to the bccclackamas@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. Now Clerk, will you please moderate public communication via Zoom?
Mr. Vice Chair, do not have any general public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, Vice. That's me. Hold on. Here we go. So we...
So Vice Chair, would you first ask if anyone in the room? I don't think you have any blue cards, but you do one more call in case anyone in the room.
For general... No, these are for the budget item later. Okay, perfect. Is there any general comments within the room? For anybody that wants to make a comment, fill out a blue card or come on up. Okay, and we have nobody on Zoom, so seeing none. I will now close public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
All right. You are about to have eight public hearings for the Clackamas County Budget and its component units. If you would please, we'll start with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Chair, if you'd please convene as the Housing Authority Board.
I will now recess as the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners, and we will now reconvene as the Clackamas County Housing Authority.
Thank you. Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. We'll wait a minute. Anne, are you there?
I am here.
Good morning, Commissioner Leenstra. This is a public hearing for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution 1990 Adopting the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget. Budget is $107,792,548. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, state funds, Metro Housing Bond, and Supportive Housing Services Funds, local project funds, and other local funds. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, the Clackamas County Finance Director, will be presenting, and she'll be doing all the presentations today. Please go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director. And on May 28th, 2024, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Budget Committee approved the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget and appropriations of $107,792,548.
Do any of the commissioners have any clarifying questions or comments? I don't see any. I'll now open the meeting to public testimony. I will now take in-person testimony first. Now Clerk, will you please moderate any public communication via Zoom? Or if there's any in the room on this issue, please come up and fill out the blue card to testify on this specific issue within the Housing Authority hearing. I am not seeing any. Do you see any there on Zoom?
I do not, Vice Chair.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing and ask for any further discussion. Or Ms. Leenstra, if you'd like to make a motion, I'll accept the motion.
I move we approve Resolution 1990 Adopting the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Terrific. It has been moved by Commissioner Leenstra and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Do I have any further discussion on this motion?
Would you please read the dollar amount as part of the motion?
I will, yes. It has been moved by Commissioner Leenstra to approve Resolution 1990 Adopting the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget with the budget of $107,792,548. Do I have any further discussion on that motion? I'm seeing none. Clerk, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Chair Smith. Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Gary, what's next?
Next is the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. If you'll please convene as that Chair.
I will... I will...
Recede.
Am I recessing?
It's the bottom of page two of your script, please.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority of the Board and now convene as the North Clackamas Parks District Board of Directors.
Very good. And thank you, Commissioner Leenstra. You may go about your day. Thank you. All right. Your now meeting is the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. This is a public hearing, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution Adopting and Appropriating Funds for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 and Categorizing and Imposing a Property Tax for Tax Year 2024-2025. Total budget is $48,281,237, with appropriations totaling $38,876,404, and a permanent tax rate of $0.5382 per $1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. Funding is through beginning fund balances, property taxes, fees and fines, and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present, and Kia Selly, the District Director, is in the room if there are any questions. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. On May 28th, 2024, the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Budget Committee approved the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget of $48,281,237, and with appropriations of $38,876,404.
Do any of the directors here have any questions or clarifying comments for this? I'm not seeing any. I'll now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll now take in-person testimony first. Any in-person testimony for the Parks and Recreation District? Do we have any? And do we have anybody online, Clerk?
Mr. Vice Chair, there are not currently any public members online.
Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion, or I'll even entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Budget for Fiscal Year 2425 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is $48,281,237, with appropriations totaling $38,876,404, and a permanent tax rate of $0.5382. That is $0.5382 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Scholl that we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for the tax year 2024-25. The total budget is $48,281,237, with appropriations totaling $38,876,404, and a permanent tax rate of $0.5382 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. It has been seconded by, I forget, by Commissioner Savis. That's a long one to read, by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion on this motion is before us. I'm seeing none. Clerk, please take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Passes 5-0. The motion moves forward. Okay, I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks District Board and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is Development Agency Public Hearing, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution Adopting and Appropriating Funds for the Clackamas County Development Agency Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Total budget is $41,83,194, with appropriations totaling $41,83,194. Funding is through beginning fund balances, property taxes, and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present.
Thank you. On May 28th, 2024, the Clackamas County Development Agency Budget Committee approved the fiscal year 2425 budget and appropriations in the amount of $41,83,194.
Do any of the directors have any clarifying questions, any comments after that presentation? I'm not seeing any. I'm now going to open up the meeting for public testimony. I will now take in-person testimony first. Do we have any on this issue, Clerk? We do not have any. Do we have any via Zoom?
Mr. Vice Chair, do not have any public members online.
Thank you. Tony, I will now close the public hearing and ask if there are any further discussions, and I will even entertain a motion at this time.
I move we approve the resolution... Oops, I'm sorry. I'm on page... I skipped page. I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County Development Agency Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Total budget is $41,83,194, with appropriations totaling $41,83,194.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl, I second.
It has been moved by Director Scholl that we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating the funds for the Clackamas County Development Agency Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25. The total budget is $41,83,194, with appropriations totaling $41,83,194. It has been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Is there any further discussion on this motion? I am not seeing any. Tony, please take the poll for us.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as the Development Agency Board and convene as the Clackamas County Service District 5, Street Lighting, Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Service District Number 5 Public Hearing, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution Adopting and Appropriating Funds for the Clackamas County Service District Number 5, Lighting District, for budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Total budget is $5,449,676, with appropriations of $3,333,076. Funding is through ratepayers. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present.
Thank you. On May 28th, 2024, the Service District Number 5 Budget Committee approved the fiscal year 2425 proposed and appropriated budget of $5,449,676, with appropriations of $3,333,076.
Do any of my fellow directors have any clarifying questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. I'll now open the meeting to public testimony, and I will take the in-person testimony first. Take a look. None. And then, do we have anybody via Zoom? I'll give you a chance to take a look. Is that a no? Okay?
That is a no, Vice Chair.
Okay, perfect. Okay, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. I'm not seeing any. Can I have a motion from a director, please?
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County Service District Number 5 Budget for Fiscal Year 2425. Total budget is $5,449,676, with appropriations of $3,333,076.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Savis that we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County Service District Number 5 Budget for Fiscal Year 24-25. The total budget is $5,409,676, with appropriations of $3,333,076, and it has been seconded by Director Schrader. Do we have any further discussion on this? I'm not seeing any. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as the Service District Number 5 Board and convene as the Clackamas County Library Service District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Library Service District Public Hearing, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution Adopting and Appropriating Funds for the Library Service District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and Categorizing and Imposing a Property Tax for Tax Year 2024-25. Total budget is $24,827,949, with appropriations of $24,827,949, and a permanent tax rate of $0.3974 per $1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. Funding is through property taxes and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present.
On May 28th, 2024, the Libraries District Budget Committee approved fiscal year 2425 proposed and appropriated budget of $24,827,949.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Do any of the directors have any clarifying questions or comments regarding this presentation? I am not seeing any. I'm not going to open up the meeting for public testimony. I'll take the in-person testimony first. Any on Zoom?
Not at this time, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion, and I will also entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Library Service District Budget for Fiscal Year 2425 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2425. Total budget is $24,827,949, with appropriations of $24,827,949, and a permanent tax rate of $0.3974 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Savis that the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Library Service District Budget for Fiscal Year 24-25 and categorizing and imposing property taxes for the tax year 24-25. Total budget is $24,872,949, with appropriations of $24,827,949, and a permanent tax rate of $0.3974 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. That was seconded by Director Schrader. Do we have any further discussion on this motion?
Yes, Chair. Just in light of what some of us may have heard on Friday at our C4 retreat, if anyone ever says, or any city member says, the cities are subsidizing services outside the unincorporated area, just be mindful of this library district and the funds that's being collected for library service districts, and ask for clarification as to what they mean when they say unincorporated areas are not paying their fair share. That's my comment.
I kind of want you to unpack that a little more, but I get it. Anyone else? Gary's leaving. I get it. You get it. Everybody get... Okay. Further discussions are going to happen, I'm sure, around that topic in the near future. Any other comments from anybody on this motion that's before us? I am not seeing any, Tony. So we're going to take the poll. Thank you.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. It is approved. I will now adjourn as the Library Service District Board and convene as the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Board of Directors. We are moving right along here. Gary, what is next?
This is the Extension and 4-H Service District Public Hearing, Item 1, Approval of a Resolution Adopting and Appropriating Funds for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is $15,889,342, with appropriations of $2,769,536, and a permanent tax rate of $0.05 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. Funding is through beginning fund balance, property taxes, interest, and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present.
On May 28th, 2024, the Extension and 4-H Service District Budget Committee approved the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget of $15,889,342, and appropriations of $2,769,536.
Do any of my fellow directors have any clarifying questions or comments? I will now open this meeting to public testimony. I'll take in-person testimony first. And Clerk, do we have any via Zoom?
Mr. Vice Chair, do not have any general public members online at the moment.
Thank you for that. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. I'll also entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is $15,889,342, with appropriations of $2,769,536, and a permanent tax rate of $0.05 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Schrader that we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Budget Fiscal Year 24-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for the tax year of 2425. The total budget is $15,889,342, with appropriations of $2,769,536, and a permanent tax rate of $0.05 per 1,000 of assessed value within district boundaries. That was seconded by Director Savis. Any further questions or discussion on this motion before us? I am not seeing any. Clerk, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The motion is approved. I will now adjourn as the Extension and 4-H Service District Board and convene as the Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary, you're up.
Thank you. Next, you have three items as the Water Environment Services Board of Directors. First are two board discussion items. The first board discussion item is Approval of a Resolution Adjusting System Development Charges for Water Environment Services for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Fiscal impact is approximately $203,500 in additional revenues per year. Funding is through system development charges. No county general funds are involved. Greg Geis, the Director of Water Environment Services, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, directors. As Gary said, we have three items, including our budget today. So I'll just read my script. This resolution is for adjustments to the sewer and surface water system development charge for new connections to Wes's systems. The recommended 2.7% adjustments are inflationary only, and based on the 2023 calendar year Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, these increases would generate approximately $204,000 in additional SDC revenue and become effective July 1, 2024. These charges were included in the fiscal year 2425 budget that was approved by Wes's Budget Committee on May 28. And I respectfully recommend that the Board, acting as the governing body of Water Environment Services, approves this resolution.
Do we have any questions or clarifying questions or comments with that presentation before us? Commissioner Scholl, you're in. You're up.
Sir Geis, I understand that even with this increase in additional revenues for SDC charges, Wes is still very competitive when compared to our neighboring similar entities, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to make a comment. To my earlier comment regarding libraries and subsidies, where some city members are believing that they are subsidizing unincorporated areas, I would say that this is another example whereby... Well, I'll digress a little bit. SDCs don't recover 100% of the cost of growth. They're designed to augment the cost of growth. The rest of it is picked up by the base. And in this case, the base is quite a bit unincorporated area. And historically, CCSD 1, part of that, has been the retail big arm of that, as well as the growing part of Happy Valley. So just another note that that's a year-long subsidy as well.
Thank you for that.
A years-long subsidy as well.
Okay. Schrader, did I see you?
No.
Nope. Okay. So do I have a motion?
I move we approve the resolution adjusting system development charges for Water Environment Services for Fiscal Year 2024-25.
It has been moved by Director Scholl. And do I have a second?
Seconded.
And it has been seconded by direct... Hold on, let me back up. Yeah, it has been seconded by Director Savis, that we move and approve the resolution adjusting the system development charges for the Water and Environment Services for Fiscal Year 2024. The fiscal impact is approximately $203,500 in additional to revenues per year, funding through systems and development charges. No county general funds are involved. Do we have any further discussion on that motion before us? I'm not seeing... None? Okay. I will now close the public comment period, and we will take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. It is approved. Gary, what's next?
All right. This is the second Water Environment Services Board Discussion Item, Item 2, Approval of a Board Order Amending and Adopting Rates and Charges for Water Environment Services. Fiscal impact is approximately $1,300,000 in additional sewer and surface water charges. sewer and surface water monthly service charge revenue. Funding is through rate payers. No county general funds are involved. Greg Geist will present as well.
Thank you. Yep, this is, the second one is a board order to amend and adopt rates and charges for sewer and surface water rates for next fiscal year. The updated rates are aligned with Wes's long-term financial plan and reflect approximately five percent adjustments to the monthly charges for wastewater treatment, collection, and surface water management. Most customers that Wes serves will see an increase of a dollar twenty per month or approximately fourteen dollars and forty cents per year for combined wastewater and surface water services. Altogether, the proposed rate increases would generate approximately one-point-three million in additional monthly service charge revenue for Wes and would be effective July 1st, 2024. Once again, they were included in our FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget approved by Wes's Budget Committee on May 28th, and I respectfully request that you, as the governing body, approve the board order.
Do any of the directors have any clarifying questions or comments after the presentation? I am not seeing any, but I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order amending and adopting rates and charges for Water Environment Services.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Director Schrader and seconded by Director Scholl that we move to approve the board ordering, amending, and adopting the rates and charges for the wire, the Water Environment Services. Do I need to read the figure specifically, Gary? No. Okay. Any further discussion with the motion before us? I am not seeing any. Clerk, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. It is approved. Gary.
Next is Water Environment Services Public Hearing. We're back to public hearings. Item one, approval of a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Water Environment Services Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Total budget is two-hundred-seventy-five million nine hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars with appropriations totaling one-hundred-and-eighty-four million six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and six dollars. Funding is through beginning fund balances, system development charges, rates and charges, and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present, and Greg Geist, the Director, is here if there are questions. Go ahead.
On May 28th, 2024, the Water Environment Services Budget Committee approved the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget of two-hundred-seventy-five million nine hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and appropriations of one-hundred-and-eighty-four million six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and six dollars.
Thank you so much, Ms. Comfort. Any of my fellow directors have any clarifying questions or comments after that presentation? I'm not seeing any. I'll now open up the meeting for public testimony. I'll take in-person testimony first. Any? And do we have any on Zoom, Clerk?
Mr. Vice Chair, do not currently have any members of the public online.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public testimony and close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion, and also entertain a motion from one of the directors.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Water Environment Services Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25. The total budget is two-hundred-seventy-five million nine hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars with appropriations totaling one-hundred-and-eighty-four million six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and six dollars. Second.
See, it has been moved by Director Scholl that we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Water Environment Services Budget for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five. Total budget is two-hundred-seventy-five million nine hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars within the appropriations totaling one-hundred-and-eighty-four million six hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and six dollars. It has been seconded by Commission, by Director Savis. Any further discussion on this motion? I am not seeing any. Clerk, please take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. It is approved. Gary.
Thank you. Chair, will you please convene as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District?
I will. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board and convene as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Board of Directors. What's next?
This is the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Public Hearing, item one, approval of a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand seventy-four dollars with appropriations of eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand seventy-four dollars and a permanent tax rate of zero point seven one nine eight dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value within district boundaries. No county general funds are involved. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present.
On June 6th, 2024, the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Budget Committee approved the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget and appropriations of eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand and seventy-four dollars.
Do any of the directors have any clarifying questions or comments from the presentation? I am not seeing any. I'll now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll now take in-person testimony first. Seeing none. Any Zoom?
Do not currently have any public members online, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Well, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's any further discussion. I'll also entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand seventy-four dollars with appropriations of eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand seventy-four dollars and a permanent tax rate of zero point seven one nine eight dollars per one thousand of assessed value and within district boundaries.
Second, and I have a comment.
It has been moved by Director Schrader that we adopt and appropriate funds for the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Budget for Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year twenty-four through twenty-five. A total budget, the total budget is eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand seven, and seventy-four dollars with appropriations of eight million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand and seventy-four dollars and a permanent tax rate of zero point seven one nine eight dollars per one thousand of assessed value within distinct boundary, district boundaries. That has been moved by Director Schrader, and it was seconded by Director Savis. Any further discussion, Commissioner, I mean Director Savis?
Yes. First of all, I want to just say that based on the budget meetings and June 6th in particular, it appears we're making progress with trying to keep this district whole in its purpose and intent. And I'm looking at the very last line where it says no county general funds are involved. I think we had an appropriation in a policy, and I'm, number one, first thing, I'm hoping we're going to be crafting an IGA that codifies this policy and transfers those funds accordingly. But technically, aren't county general funds involved as a result of that agreement?
So the answer is yes. This proposed budget, there is not general funds, but yes, during the upcoming fiscal year, you will have to do a supplemental budget to transfer some general funds to support the ELED. But it's technically not in today's adopted budget, but it will be in the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you for their clarification. I just want to make sure we're making progress on crafting that.
And the IGA will be before you when you get back from your July recess.
Any further discussion on this? I'll make a quick comment. I, I am really, it was a lot of work, but we did really significant deliberations on this specific issue within the budget, and I really want to thank the five members of our community that made up this budget committee, that really rolled up their sleeves and tried to really fix some confusion and some things that maybe weren't best practices with how this was being done, but really being protective of public dollars and money and adding increased transparency and modernizing basic accounting standards and making sure that they are adhering to those, those standards of practice. There's a lot of work, but I, I want to thank the Sheriff's Office, the, the Budget Committee that worked on this, that really was about doing right by people's dollars, and I think we did get, as Commissioner Savis alluded to, or Director Savis in this instance, some really good policy decisions to help with that. So with that, I will, unless there's any other further comments, I will, I will call for the poll.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. It is approved. I will now adjourn as the Enhanced Law Enforcement District Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Now we're all Commissioners again. Gary, what is next?
This is a regular public hearing for the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, item one, approval of a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is one million five hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Wait, let me say that again. One billion, forgive me. The total budget is one billion five hundred and sixty-six million three hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and three dollars with appropriations of one billion four hundred and fourteen million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and one dollars and a permanent tax rate of two dollars, of a permanent tax rate of two-point-four-zero-four-two dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value within the Clackamas County City Zone and two-point-nine-seven-six-six dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value within the Clackamas County Rural Zone, a public safety local option levy of zero-point-three-six-eight-zero dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value, and five million nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars for debt service for general obligation bonds. Funding is through beginning fund balance, taxes, federal, state, local, charges, fees, license, permits, fines, assessments, revenue from bonds and other debts, all other revenue sources, other intra-fund transfers, and one-hundred-and-fifty-seven million five hundred and four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars in budgeted county general funds. Phew, all right. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, go ahead, please.
Thank you. On May 30th, 2024, the Clackamas County Budget Committee approved a total budget of one billion five hundred and sixty-six million two hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and appropriations of one million four hundred, one billion four hundred and fourteen million six hundred and ninety-one thousand seventy-three dollars. During the May 30th meeting, staff shared the elected official's compensation was budgeted in the general fund non-D department, and upon that approval of the Budget Committee, we would shift those corresponding dollars to those departments. These changes increased the budget by the ninety-one thousand twenty-nine dollars through transfers to the elected departments. These updates are shown on the table and in the second page of the staff report before you for a total budget of one billion five hundred and sixty-six million three hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and three dollars with appropriations of one billion four hundred and fourteen million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand and one hundred and one dollars.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any clarifying questions or comments on this presentation? I'm not seeing any. I'll now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll take in-person testimony first. I do have a couple cards. If you want to fill out a card and testify, you can fill out the card right over here, and then our Clerk will grab it and make sure we get a chance to call on you. And then I will ask in a moment for those that are waiting on Zoom to speak. Let's see, I will take, so I guess I, on the order received, I will, I will call up Shirley Morgan. Please come up and then get close to the mic and introduce yourself and what part of the county you live in, and we are, I'm very appreciative that you're here to speak with us today. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan from Welch's. I am in support of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, but would like to share three concerns about the budget procedures. The process, the lack of trust, and the lack of respect for the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office has often complained as being the largest part of the general fund, when in reality, the general fund only covers half of what the sheriff needs, which is why there are levies, grants, and other sources of revenues. They multi-manage the ELED, levies, grants, the training of deputies and staff, parole and corrections, manage a fleet of vehicles, the jail, and protect the courthouse. They are unlike any other department, yet the financial processes used lacks the understanding of the complexity and does not provide empathy in their operations as a whole. The motion made to remove two million dollars from the parole and corrections without understanding what the impacts would be was short-sighted and does not build trust. The motion to penalize the Sheriff's Office noting that they cannot apply for supplemental, supplemental funds without meeting all the requirements of the MOS audit was a bad idea. It was discriminatory and does not build trust, as the audit recommended a number of changes needed by the county administrator, the finance department, and the Sheriff's Office, none of which are related to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. In closing, I know there are always two sides to every conflict that I can't see as a citizen, and solving them can be challenging, but they should be respectful. As Commissioner Scholl noted during the budget deliberations, over thirty-five minutes was spent on issues related to the Sheriff's Office rather than the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We do not have to like our elected officials or agree with their choices, but we have to respect their position, as I do all of you. By law, elected officials are allowed to manage their departments in whatever legal way they choose. Process, trust, and respect are related. We must use procedures that are inclusive in the decision-making process before implementing new programs in the county, which helps to build trust and develop respect over time. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide me with any clarifications that I might not be aware of.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. We appreciate your testimony and your drive all the way out here to the side of the county. It is much appreciated.
It was a sunny day.
It is a beautiful day, but it's still a long drive nonetheless. Does any, do any Commissioners want to address Ms. Morgan? I don't see any, but thank you so much for coming and taking the time. We really appreciate your involvement in the public process. Our friend, Mr. Mullen, you're up.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, for the record, John Mullen from Oregon City, and I want to just also say hello to the Chair, and we're happy to hear your voice online. A few things I want to say about the, the budget. First of all, I appreciated the discussion that happened during the Budget Committee hearing about volunteerism, and I just want to point out, I got the Clackamas County Guide in the mail, and I was really appreciative of seeing a lot of discussion about volunteer opportunities and recruiting for those volunteers. I think that's a good step forward. I, I want to talk just a little bit about the process. We did have a little bit more time to review the budget than we did last year, members of the public. The timing of when things are printed, as to when discussions are going to happen, is, can be a problem in the sense that you have a lot to accomplish, there's a lot to do, but for example, I came early to hear the budget message, and I'm glad I came early because it was delivered early. So that's, that's something, a little bit of a concern. Also about the, the process, I would just mention that 3HS is the largest organization in the county with budget and staff and devoted about fifteen minutes, according to my calculation, on the total budget for that department. I also want to mention DEI, which I mentioned in the, in the budget meeting with the Budget Committee. I think that it'll be important to evaluate how that program is working with the new model. I also, I'm interested in the report that's coming out from the Coalition of Communities of Color, and in light of that report, there may be some changes that you want to contemplate in the year ahead. And finally, I just want to say that I'm grateful that there were no cuts that I was here to talk about, as I was last year. However, I am concerned about ongoing sustainability of the budget with the fifteen million dollars that comes off the top and the potential for other costs such as mitigation of traffic concerns, as well as, I understand that you will receive a supplemental budget request from the Sheriff's Department about staff at the courthouse. So I just want to thank all of you and the, the many members of the Budget Committee for the work that you've done, and also to compliment your staff. the work that you've done, and also to compliment your staff, including your administrator, who's responded to my request, and for information, I really appreciate that. So again, thank you. Happy first day of summer, and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
John, thank you so much again for your... making the time to come and testify. We really appreciate your valuable words to this county. Does anybody on the board want to address or have any questions for John?
No, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for being our conscience. I think that another Schrader had told you that multiple times, and I'm saying the same thing, so keeping us on our toes with this and trying to do the right thing for the human service delivery systems at this county.
I will second that. Thank you, John, for your testimony today. We appreciate you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
No problem. Any comments on Zoom? Anybody wants to speak on Zoom?
Mr. Vice Chair, do not currently have any general public members on Zoom.
Okay. Seeing that there's no further comments, no comment cards regarding this portion of our meeting, I am now going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year 2024-25. Total budget is $1,566,336,303 with appropriations of $1,414,782,101 and a permanent tax rate of $2.4042 per $1,000 of assessed value within the Clackamas County city zone. $2.97 correction, $2.9766 per $1,000 of assessed value within the Clackamas County rural zone, a public safety local option levy of $0.3680 per $1,000 of assessed value, and $5,970,000 for debt service for general obligation bonds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Scholl that we approve the resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the Clackamas County budget fiscal year of '24 through '25 and categorizing and imposing a property tax for tax year '24-'25. Total budget is $1,566,336,303 with appropriations of $1,414,782,101 and a permanent tax rate of $2.4042 per $1,000 of assessed value in Clackamas County city zone, $2.9766 per $1,000 of assessed value within the Clackamas County rural zone, a public safety local option levy of $0.3680 per $1,000 of assessed value, and $5,970,000 for the debt service of a general obligation bond. I had a second from Commissioner Savas. That is a mouthful. Any further discussion regarding this motion before us?
Yes, I do. Just overall comments. Appreciate all the hard work, our staff, all the different departments in putting together the budget. I, as I've been accepting the condensed district reports or department reports to move the budget along, I'm hoping that we can have a moment or a time or next budget cycle to have and expand that, not maybe quite to where it was before, but have a better idea of how those agencies, departments, districts are all faring in light of these inflationary times, which inflation is just a big factor, as well as this longstanding issue where expenses have outpaced revenues, which has been a longstanding issue years ago. I call it the jaws of death if you look at it on a graph. And I know these financial pressures really put stresses on all of us, and it's responsible, and I believe for every jurisdiction or department to make a stand and be mindful of their particular budget and make the best case they can and take all the measures they can to advocate for their portion of the budget. All said, I have found in my private sector life that the best way to solve problems sometimes is to detach yourself from your own situation and look at it from the other side, and ideally, that happens on both sides. I kind of sometimes refer to that ideal. It leads to good faith discussions, and I think our staff of those departments and staff of other departments, if they sometimes maybe don't see or experience that or understand that as much, I think that's somewhat natural to not know the inner workings of another department. But we have a lot of very significant challenges, and what I'm realizing even Monday at AOC, that the financial challenges that are affecting not only here in Clackamas County, the state and federal, I don't think a lot of elected officials and/or maybe staff understand how significant these challenges we're facing are. This morning, I asked... at JPACT, I asked a question, like, what factor are you using, inflationary factor are you using to calculate these projects? And the number I was given, I believe, was like 28%. I could be wrong on that, but it was a small amount of number. And yet, there's one significant project where the price actually tripled. It went from $249 million to $750 million. So not all things are seeing that kind of inflation, but certainly, again, those of us, as I mentioned before, that go shopping or are normal commodities that we normally buy as residents and families and households, we're seeing it everywhere. The plights we have, the challenges we face with not only financial issues but policy issues with regards to homelessness and housing, health and human services, libraries, parks, roads, law enforcement, all of this, they're all under stress and strain from everything that we have been dealing with, and some of these interrelate. You can't separate law enforcement and public safety from the homeless crisis or health and human services, and I think we have taken great strides, and I appreciate the progress we're making on getting a recovery center up and running, which try to address some of those needs, which will, again, alleviate ideally by serving those people a number of these departments and so forth. So a lot said, but I just don't want to, again, acknowledge that I think we need to really be... try to be more understanding of the other side or the other predicament or see both sides of the equation, as I call it, and understand that without that deeper understanding, there's no... it's obviously we're going to have conflict, misunderstanding, and miscommunication. So again, I appreciate everyone's professionalism, and I look forward to more of that as we try to cope through these more challenging times. It's not going to get any easier next year. It's going to be as difficult, probably more so than it was this year. So let's try to be as professional about as we can. I think we will, and I'll close my comments there.
Commissioner Savas, thank you for those good comments. Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, thank you. On the budget, so I appreciate Commissioner Savas's comments. You know, as this nation and our state move into a questionable budget future, we must identify what our options are to reduce the cost of government in order to provide the most efficient and cost-effective county government to the people of Clackamas County. As budgets get tighter, instead of looking at new revenue streams and new taxes and higher fees, we must look at ways to cut government. It's going to become a necessity to do that. Keep in mind that this government exists for the benefit of the people of Clackamas County, and no one in the county has approached me and said that higher taxes and more expensive government lead to greater prosperity. Thank you.
Gary?
Chair Smith would like to speak.
Chair Smith, you're up.
Thank you, everyone. I agree with the comments from both Commissioners. However, I would like to highlight a philosophy and a fact. Philosophy that I've tried to impart is, I think, regarding budget, that this particular Board of County Commissioners should really concentrate on county core services. And I know that can be at times confusing and controversial, but it is not our duty to necessarily fund every great idea that walks through the door and requests money from us as we get that practically on a daily basis, and I know all Commissioners deal with this. And if there's alternative funding available through nonprofits or state or federal government for some of these ideas, then I think it's up to us to try to divert those requests to those areas. And Commissioner Savas is right. There's going to be more stressors upon our county to deliver what the public demands, and Commissioner Scholl is also right. I don't hear people screaming for more taxes or more taxes or more taxes. I would like you to... on my second comment revolves around a fact, either Gary or Elizabeth Comfort can answer this question. How much money is remaining in beginning fund balance, reserves, and contingencies? Can somebody give me that number?
Elizabeth, can you? Do you have that offhand?
I would need a minute.
Well, I believe, Elizabeth, it's around $100 million to $110 million in carryover, and it's proven by the last resolution that we passed of total budget is $1.566 billion and appropriations of $1.414 billion. You subtract those numbers, and you get basically, we're not spending everything, we're getting about, what, $150 million carryover? So I think this budget is structurally sound in that we have ample contingencies, reserves, and the beginning fund balances, which goes to our departments and the elected officials to carry out their business. So for today, anyway, we have done very good budget work. My hat's off to all the Budget Committee members. As you know, I was unable to attend, but I think you all did fantastic yeoman's work on that, and I'm very appreciative of your knowledge and your abilities that you brought to this budget cycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chair. We appreciate that. Martha Schrader, Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to end this budget cycle with a shout-out to our Administrator Gary Schmidt and to our finance team, who have done a Herculean job in lifting this budget and helping us move it towards long-term sustainability. I know with the efforts that our teams have made here, and that includes the Directors of all of our departments, they have really gone through the budgets and scoured their budgets and really did a heavy lift in making sure that fundamentally, they were funding what was necessary and were trying to trim up as much as possible, yet still being able to deliver the essential services that we as a county provide to our citizens. I'd like... I guess I'd like to take... I guess I want to make sure they get the credit for the sustainable budget, because I know from my own viewpoint that we really couldn't do this without their dedication to our citizens and their dedication to public service. And I've always felt that part of my job was to make sure that those folks had the space, the time, and the opportunity to shine at their jobs, and they do, and they have never disappointed us. And I see Cindy Becker in the audience, too, who was also a big player in all of this. And yes, sometimes budgets are painful. I do agree that it's been somewhat painful with the sheriff this time, but I viewed that as more of aligning what our fiscal processes were for transparency. It was not an attempt to take anything away, but if we have a similar understanding in what we're looking at was the real crux of the matter. And I do acknowledge public safety is different. I think every colleague I have here that I've worked with has always been totally supportive of public safety, and we will continue to do so and work on our relationship with our sheriff and those folks and align how we do the process. It really was a technical issue more than anything else as I observe this move forward, and I think that we're on a great, great pathway to not fix it, but to hone our skills together, and that was the reason we did the audit. It was not to be punitive, it was not to do that, but just point out where were our processes. We're not in alignment in how we could do better as a team. So I want to give a shout-out to... thanks to the Sheriff's Office for working with us. They got a little bumpy sometimes, but that's okay. It always... you know, things do get bumpy, and we work through it. And again, thank you, team, for all the work that you've done for this county.
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to just thank Commissioner Schrader, echo her thoughts, and just say that, and I'll be more direct on this one, and that is that no matter what we do in life, most people don't like change, and we've had to change. We changed our financial processes and so forth and converting to a chart of accounts. That means that we all got to comply in order to be transparent and to streamline things to work better. So I know change is not well-accepted, and it takes time, but we're getting there, so my kudos to staff for that, and Gary, your support to help them along, and so that's all I wanted to say.
You know, to get to the point where we are today, it actually started during my first budget cycle when we, as a Budget Committee and a Board, said, hey, we have to do this audit, and the audit wasn't punitive. The audit was, we need some sunlight so we can clearly see what's happening, so we can be a better county with public dollars. And those processes matter, like Commissioner Schrader just mentioned. And so I would be hard-pressed to find any Board of County Commissioners across the state that supports law enforcement more than this one across the board. It's a core value of who we are, but we, as the governing body that controls the purse strings, we have to be accountable to those public dollars, and all those dollars need to go and stretch as far as we can make them stretch and go. And so I think we have maybe begun to start that process to find the best pathway moving forward to make sure that every department and every elected official has some continuity and some clarity in how they do their accounting processes so that not just this Board, but the public can be clear on where every dollar goes and ends up. And it sounds like that we're all getting on the same page, not just the Sheriff's Department, but all of us, all the departments across the board. And so there is a change in that. There's a learning curve for all of us. But those policies that this Budget Committee and this Board put forward were to get in alignment with the audit and to make sure we were doing best practices as quickly as possible. And just like this Board has said in the past, I do support supplemental budgets. If they need something... if an officer needs to be funded and they don't have the funding in their budget, we will fund it. If they need certain supplies that are critical for their job, we will find the money to fund it. We just need clarity in that process. We just need... just like Commissioner Schrader said, just I can't echo her words. We're pretty much perfect, as always, but that those processes matter so that we can have confidence and we can be absolutely judicious with every one of those public dollars. So I... it doesn't really come out during the budget process, but more of this is going to come out later. I'm going to talk about the recovery campus a little bit. Did some work around that this week, not just at AOC, meeting again with Senator Ron Wyden's staff, who's excited about Clackamas County's recovery campus and trying to help us find federal dollars. This campus is innovative and different than much of what we've seen anywhere in Oregon, from street-level homelessness, hopefully... from street-level homelessness, hopefully, to somebody a year and a half, two years later being self-sufficient, whole, and back on their feet again, from detox to temporary housing to long-term recovery, then getting into workforce housing, and then being back in the community as somebody that has overcome substance abuse and homelessness and not someone that is defined by it, is the purpose of this recovery campus. And so I know that there's more to come in the next few weeks regarding that, but it was really, Ron Wyden's office seems to be very excited about this process. I hope to bring it up. And Congresswoman Salinas wants to have a discussion around this also, as she is acutely aware of the problems in this issue in Oregon. So our congressional delegation on the Senate and House side have been very supportive of that. And I know that having these assets for people to get off the streets and to get healed and to get the treatment that they deserve is essential to bringing the pressures off of law enforcement from the, you know, initially, and taking some of those pressures away. The goal is to have a healthy community that, where we need less of these resources, not more of them, because people are doing better. And that's the overall goal. So I'm excited with recovery campus. I think it will fit seamlessly into our overall objectives as a county. I want to take a moment to congratulate from this dais Milwaukee, the new Milwaukee City Councilor, Will Anderson. I had the pleasure of going to his swearing-in, and we, I think he'll do a fantastic job for that community and that he will work well with the county at a local level. Will is a fantastic young man who brings a lot of great ideas. I think he has, he seems like somebody who wants to dive right in and do the work at the local government level and be effective in that way. And it is nice to have that fresh pair of eyes and those new ideas and someone who is ready to, through solid and beneficial relationship with the county, work with us on how to move that forward from anywhere, from housing to transportation and all the local issues that we deal with. I spent a little bit of time with him, Commissioner Savas, I know that you spent some time with him. I just wanted to take a moment from the county and say congratulations to Mr. Anderson for winning his election and getting sworn in this week. And then we, a lot of us spent a lot of time in Salem this week at the--
Vice Chair, forgive me, you're still, you have a pending motion to vote on.
On the budget.
On the budget. We're still there.
This isn't our comments.
Nope, nope.
Everything ties to the budget. Then I'm going to, I'll pause, I'll pause there. Does it not somehow, right? Then I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. I think now we're going to get to comments. Gary, no?
Next is the consent agenda.
Oh, the consent agenda. Okay, so hold on, that was approved. Gary, let's go to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Commissioners. Congratulations, you've now adopted the entire county budget for the new fiscal year. Thank you very much. Next is consent agenda for Clackamas County. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials. Item One: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item Two: Approval to Apply for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Use Site-Based Program Grant. Grant Value is Approximately $1,600,000 over three years. Funding through the U.S. Department of Justice. No County General Funds are involved. For the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Transportation and Development. Item One: Approval of a Contract with Sierra Santa Fe Corporation for the Redland Area Chip Seal Project. Total Value is $1,919,777 over six months. Funding through House Bill 2017 County Road Funds. And no County General Funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of a Board Order Authorizing Issuance of a Purchase Order for Traffic Paints. Under a State of Oregon Cooperative Contract with Ennis Flint Incorporated. Total Value Not to Exceed $800,000 over two years. Funding through County Road Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Item Three: Approval of Amendment Number Five with Consor North America Incorporated for the Stafford Road Improvements Project. Amendment Value $379,343 for a total contract value of $2,207,760. Funding through Community Road Funds and Countywide System Development Charges. No County General Funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services. Item One: Approval of Renewal Amendment Number Three. Increasing Funding and Duration of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah Education Service District for Medicaid Administrative Claiming Coordination Services. Amendment Value $3,860 for one year. Agreement Value Increased to $63,256 for 3.5 years. Funding through the State of Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of Revenue Agreement with Regent Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oregon for Reimbursement of Services Provided to Members. Estimated Value is $250,000 per year until termination. Funding through Regent Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. Item Three: Approval of Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for the Primary Care Payment Model Program. Agreement Value Estimated at $1,950,000 for one year. Funding through Care Oregon Incorporated. No County General Funds are involved. Item Four: Approval to Apply for Funding Opportunity with the Federal Human Services, Federal Human Resources and Services Administration for Improving Transitions in Care for Justice Involved Populations. Total Possible Value $1,000,000 for two years. Funding through the Federal Human Resources and Services Administration. No County General Funds are involved. Item Five: Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Teen Challenge International Pacific Northwest Centers for Life Renewal Behavioral Change Program Services. Total Agreement Value $1,337,894 for two years. Funding through American Rescue Plan. State and Local Recovery Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item Six: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for Crisis and Support Line Services. Agreement Value is $2,114,280 for three years. Funding through Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Health Plan. No County General Funds are involved. Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes the list.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items from this consent agenda? Can I have a motion?
Move for Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Savas to approve the consent agenda, and then we have a second by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Clerk, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair West.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. It is approved. Gary, I think now we get to get to all the good news.
Yes, so I will pass on my Administrator update today, so next is Commissioner Communications.
Okay. Any Commissioners want to communicate on this business meeting for this week? Any, anybody? I will finish my comments. Once again, congratulations to Will Anderson, the new Milwaukee Councilor. I alluded to some of that in the previous part of our meeting. Many of us were at AOC, I found it to be quite productive. Commissioner Savas, you were there advocating and helping educate and for transportation and community development. Commissioner Schrader, you were there, I think, for almost the entire two days. I was there for a day and a half, had to come back here and chair this meeting, but then drove back to Salem to continue with the Legislative Committee. But it was a really productive two days. Had really great conversations with Matt Chase, who is the CEO/Director of the Association of, the National Association of Counties. It was unfortunate that the new incoming president could not join us, though. He wanted to be here and arguing with us, but Sonoma, where he is a Commissioner, is having wildfire problems, so he had to stay back. But we are in communication with the new incoming president, and he is interested in what's happening in Oregon. One of the things that I think was great was one, the relationship building and where we're going as counties policy-wise on specific issues, the different steering committees, what legislative actions we want to take from a local government perspective in the 36 different counties in Oregon. But our involvement in Oregon with WIR is, I don't know if I can speak for you, Commissioner Schrader, but my thoughts were is that Clackamas County can do a better job supporting as a large county with these type of forest lands. And there's some, I think, some fresh voices needed in the delegation that goes to WIR, and some relationship building could happen. I think that some of WIR's interests have not been necessarily taking into consideration the unique forest lands we have in Oregon that are specifically different than other parts of the western region. But I think it was clear that Clackamas County could be an influential voice as we push policy as western states on forestry issues. So I hope that we, moving forward, can be more engaged in WIR. And I've had conversations with the incoming president of the National Association of Counties, NACO, and he would like Oregon to be involved. And he seems to be, has, starting to realize that Oregon needs to be more at the table and less conflict between other western states. That's my opinion, but I think that that was something important that came out of the last two days regarding Oregon and specifically Clackamas County. I really have enjoyed being on the Board of Directors for the Association of Counties and representing this county and being involved, also pretty involved in their Health and Human Services Steering Committee. So that was, that went on a lot, and we were in Salem a lot this last, this last week. So I appreciate kind of the new vigor and the direction and guidance that AOC has been taking. I think it's becoming more and more effective, especially as we talk about deflection and House Bill 4002 and forest lands and all the other things we're dealing with, and transportation. I think it was, it felt like we were at another C4 retreat, but a little more involved in some instances, right? Some of the same topics Commissioner Savas came up. At a local level, it's not just Clackamas County feeling these things with local transportation issues, but I thought that you, I honestly think, Commissioner Savas, you bring incredible guidance for somebody, a lot of experience on that topic. So I'll leave my comments at that for the week, as we will have a long day today. We have more meetings this afternoon, but it looks like, Gary, Chair Smith would like to comment. Chair Smith, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for a very good meeting today. Next week, I will attend in person on Tuesday and Thursday only. As of Wednesday, we have important policy sessions, but I have an important doctor's appointment, and don't mess around with cardiologists because if you cancel and reschedule, you may not get rescheduled with the cardiologist. So just wanted to let you all know that. Thank you for all your good work. You're very much appreciated, and thanks again. Bye-bye.
Chair, thank you. We are, so I will, I will second that you do not miss cardiology appointments or you may not get rescheduled. They are not easy to get, those appointments. So we are heartened by the fact that you are doing well, Chair, and that you are healing quickly. I bet you're even above schedule, and you are one tough cookie. So we know that you are going to be back with us soon and appreciate that and are here for you, and this county will continue to do its good work while you still engage from your hazelnut farm.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. We appreciate you, Chair. Any other comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Scholl.
Okay. On the cost of electricity, many constituents are very concerned about the rising electrical bills. Also, in the state of Oregon, just this past April, some 8,700 households had their electricity shut off due to lack of payment because of the high cost of these rates. So what can we do about it? There's a couple of things. The federal government in the last three and a half years has pushed out some $1,750,000 to subsidize green energy projects. So although many of them might be good, I recommend people who advocate those projects take a very close look at the effectiveness and efficiency of them to generate affordable electricity over long periods of time without raising those electrical bills even more. On the nursing strike, you've heard that Providence has got some 3,000 nurses on strike. That does not affect our Clackamas County clinics. And also, I want to make sure every parent in Clackamas County is very aware of the measles cases we have in the county, just a few right now. But for parents who have children who are not vaccinated, I just want to make sure you're very aware of this situation and recommend you consult your physician or go to our clackamas.us health centers and learn about measles and things you can take to protect your children. Also, measles is very dangerous to pregnant women. So just be aware of that, people. Also, on the Vietnam Memorial, I'm very happy to hear that the new memorial for the state Capitol grounds is now under construction. But as with any project like that, they're very expensive. And for those of you who might be inclined to donate to help the construction of that very much appreciated project that will commemorate the devotion of duty and sacrifice of our Vietnam veterans, you can go to Vietnam War Memorial online and make a donation. Also, a couple nights ago, I was with the Clackamas County Parks Board at Barton Park for a meeting, and I want to encourage moms and dads, now that school's out, we have in Clackamas County many, many very nice parks. And as I recall, as being a dad when my boys were little, one of the most exciting things we could do that was very inexpensive was to go on a overnight campout, sit around that fire and telling some ghost stories, and those memories are very precious. And so go to clackamas.us/parks and see what park might be something you might want to take a look at. And I think that should do it for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, would you like to share?
Yeah, I would like to mention someone who has been very near and dear to my heart, helped me tremendously when I was a brand-new Commissioner here in this county and taught me a lot, a lot of everything I know I will owe to her. And she was a specialist in the forestry management practices, believe it or not. And I'll be having lunch with her, and I will always listen to her wisdom because she has a long-term memory of what those practices are. And I will be having lunch with her, but this is a shout-out to Ginny Van Lu, who had her 80th birthday on June 8th, which I think is fantastic. And she was here back in 2003 as one of our policy advisors at the time. We didn't give quite that title, but she was fantastic, took me under her wing, and really helped me understand the business of government. And Commissioner Scholl, I think that you had a conversation with Ginny recently, too, and had an opportunity to pick her brain with all the knowledge she has.
Well, I did, and it was very enjoyable. I really appreciated her visit.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Other than that, I just want to mention the Association of Oregon Counties. Yes, both, two of my colleagues, we were there the other day. I was asked to go by because as one of the past presidents of the Association of Oregon County, we wanted to host the CEO of NACO, Matt Chase, who was there, and so we did have dinner with him that night. Some of it is a result of trying to understand the issues that are happening with the WIR, Western Interstate Region, and how we as counties and ONC counties and Timber Counties here in Oregon can really get a larger voice at the table with that. And I'm hopeful maybe we can discuss it under issues someday of how we'll manage to move forward with it. You know, I think it's, again, largely, most of the issues that we face can really be easily solved technically, okay? But the issue is the relationships and the issue is the communications with the people that are dealing with the issues. That's where the skill set comes in, because the technical piece is often pretty straightforward. But, you know, trying to navigate those issues really takes a lot of, I guess what is termed occasionally, emotional intelligence, right? Commissioner Savas as well, and understanding and listening and not jumping to conclusions about things. So that's been my week. Happy birthday, Ginny. I had a great time at the Cities Association Dinner in Milwaukee, where we saw a lot of our city folks prior to our, I could only go to the retreat for one day. I was there, I think, late Friday. I had things I had to do here and attended most of the housing conversation, and you handled the transportation conversation, I think, that, that first day, Commissioner Savas. And also, a shout-out to the Commissioner--
Ben and I.
Ben and I. Just calling you, calling you Ben, my young Ben. Okay, we attended the Lakewood Center for the Arts Lobster Feed, which is the combination between the Lakewood folks, the Center for the-- between the Lakewood folks, the Center for the Arts, and the Rotary Club in Lake Oswego, where they pick two major charities every year. One of them is always Lakewood, and then one of it is always another charity. They're, they're picking to donate most of the dollars from that event. And this weekend, I'll be attending tonight, I'll be going to the preview of the Arts Festival in Lake Oswego. And they're going to be having a festival all day this week, the 21st, the 22nd, and the 23rd. And I'll be heading to the patrons' party this evening to attend that and get a preview of all the artwork. And I'm going to welcome everybody to show up and go. It's a great festival. Artwork is everywhere. There's music, there's food, there's sculpture, there's paintings, there's fabric, there's, you name it, and it's a festival there. So, anyway, if it's going to be a nice weekend, I would invite everyone in our community to, not just Lake Oswego, but to head up that way and attend. So that's all I've got, folks. Okay, thank you. Great, you want to go?
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I'll, I'll cover a little bit of ground here. Had a great C4 retreat. I think one of the comments coming out of that following was a real sense of cooperation and the least amount of friction or anything really going on. It was really, really a lot of cohesion and, you know, constructive dialogue towards transportation day one and housing challenges on, on day two. Appreciate my colleagues being in attendance, that were able to attend. As I talked about earlier, and with regard to all these financial pressures that we're experiencing, Monday at AOC, we had some of our county commissioners from around the state, and I was trying to explain to them the challenges we have on the funding crisis. And we start wordsmithing a policy statement, and I, you know, clearly, you can't really craft a good statement unless you don't have a really good general understanding of the challenges. And I realize we have a lot of education to do, and clearly, there's no appetite, and frankly, there's probably not a lot of opportunity to increase funding under the current construct we currently have. Certainly not a lot of appetite to raise taxes. People feel they're taxed to death already, and as we're watching right now, people are struggling just with their utility bills, as Commissioner Scholl kind of alluded to, and it's on the media. We're watching that. Energy, anything to do with energy is going up, whether it's a gallon of gasoline, or it's power, or natural gas. So those pressures are taking place, but it was very, you know, an example, the term I want to think is, I'm thinking of, is united we stand, divided we fall. And as that conversation on Monday at AOC talked about, well, should we ask for more than 30% or asking more just to hold our ground? I think probably cities and the state are all doing the same thing, right? Again, that parochialism, you know, it's, it's where we are, and we're not really thinking of both sides of the equation, or, and there's not really always two sides. In this case, there's several sides to the equation. But I just wanted to say that I think that we are, in these inflationary times, I think the impacts, I don't understand, I'm not sure anyone really understands, all those impacts across all the spectrums of our society. So we're going to have to find a way to prioritize what's important and figure out a way to do a lot more with less. And I think we've been budgeting with that concept for a long time, do more with less. And I don't know how we do that. When prices for a ton of asphalt or, you know, a concrete steel, all the commodities it takes to build roads or fix roads, you know, the price for providing Health and Human Services, all, all the things out there, costs are just going up, and nothing's really kind of keeping pace. So I don't know what the solution actually is, but I think that at least an understanding, we should get around trying to understand each of these problems as, as best we can, so that we can come up with a good strategy moving forward. Again, united we stand, divided we fall, but I think understanding and knowledge is key to, to, to being, seeing the light and help to get ourselves united on something.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner Savas. All great reports. And if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a great afternoon.